Pray with me, please. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this day and for this evening and for this meeting that brings together these, your servants. Pray that you would bless these men and women as they wisely, courageously, and compassionately serve the rest of us so that this community is a safe and good place to live. Lord, may their decisions be wise and may the result of their meeting together this day be that civil government will be strengthened and that the citizens of this place will know that we are led by people like us who are willing to give, to serve, and to sacrifice. We pray all of this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your kind words. I'll page you aside for me.
Sure.
Well, you're gonna stay here and work. I've gotta go to prayer meetings.
That's all right.
This is his warm-up.
Yeah. He's got a good start here. Okay. Let me get my fucking hell on the fucking order here, sorry. Hi Denise. Sorry, I'm running behind. You're okay. We just not getting started. Okay, and welcome everybody and thank you for coming this evening. Do we have any public comment period, Nick?
We don't.
Okay. Then moving forward, let's try the consent agenda, which would include minutes of the previous meeting, appropriations, and the Lake Cabin House for number E15. Do I hear a motion concerning the consent agenda?
You do.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we moved to second to approve the consent agenda as written. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries five to zero. Thank you. There being no old business, we'll move on to new business. The outstanding check resolution. We had discussed this last meeting and wanted to have it in the paper one more time, which it was. And did anybody hear anything about it?
No.
No? No. So, I think then we're probably to the point of getting forward.
Mayor, I apologize for not being here last time to discuss this more in depth. I understand that there may have been some questions that came about it. If you guys are okay with it, then good to go. But if anybody has any questions, I want to make sure that my position was clear that this is probably what we should do, so.
I think that the concern was, and you guys correct me, was just that we let the public know one more time, like due diligence, so that if anybody had a, you know, had a problem, they could come in and take care of it.
And I was telling Sean earlier, a few of those checks, like the bigger ones, were like tax refund checks that were sent out that never got deposited. That money doesn't get wiped off the books because that's tax refund money from that court case. So that goes back into that fund, it never leaves it. At some point, that money will get turned back to the state because the city can't just hold that money forever.
Okay.
So that money doesn't disappear. So if those people find their check at some point, decide they want to request another one, that money's still there. The other ones are old water deposits and stuff like that. It costs us more money to write the check than it did for what the deposit.
Most of them are remainer amounts.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, well, I appreciate it. I just, my concern was that we do, and I think everybody else thought was their concern too, so. Do I hear any other concerns? Do I hear a motion about resolution?
So moved.
Okay, do you hear second? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the resolution for outstanding checks. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, motion carries, and that's resolution number 12062201. Getting on top of it here, we've got it before, right before us. Okay. Next is the gap waiver, which we do each year.
Basically what that does, so we're cash-based and we don't have to follow the state statutes on that. It allows us to use cash-based principles for accounting, so. We have to for this every year in order to follow those guidelines.
It's just, just housekeeping basically, so. Do I hear a motion to approve the gap waiver?
So moved.
Okay, second? Second, okay. It's been moved and seconded to approve the gap waiver. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries five to zero. And that resolution is 12062202. And next, Nick has the Foley Equipment Track Skid steer and Track Mini Escavator lease, renew it. It was a lot of work.
Yeah, so every year, well, last year, we renewed at the same rate we did the previous year because they didn't have equipment available. So this number is a little bit more than it was last year because we didn't have an increase the year before. These contracts, if you have one, you don't want to lose them because, or get rid of them because you never get them back. So, and I talked to Nick Stringer with Foley Equipment about buying the equipment and basically you would have the equipment for two, three years and once the warranty's getting ready, you go out, you sell it to them and they, you get new equipment. But financially, it's, you're responsible for anything that happens to that piece of equipment. A good example is when we were doing the River Walk, we had a heck of a time with the skid steer down there and we would've spent thousands of dollars fixing it with all the time they were here working on that thing when we were trying to use it. So, we have no responsibilities other than general maintenance on it. Anything breaks or it's not running correctly, they send somebody down to work on it for us, so. I recommend that we renew the leases.
Excuse me. Looks like we have to take care of provincial ripper for breaks.
Yeah. How close do we get on ours?
500 each piece.
I mean, how close do we get to?
Um, the skid steer gets the most.
Yeah.
Somewhere about 350, somewhere around there. We haven't, we, I think the year we did the River Walk, we got about 400 on it.
That's a standard that you need to be, that's good that you're, I mean, that's a good amount to use it, so.
Yeah, and then the Mini X, that cost gets split between the water department and the street department because the water department also uses the Mini X, so.
You said it had gone up a little bit, do you recall what it was? It's 14,000.
Um, it went, it's went up about, let me think about this. The skid steer went up about 3,500 and the other one went up about 4,000. So, but we didn't have an increase last year at all. So, for two years, for two years, we didn't have an increase.
So up around 7,500?
Yeah.
Not to mention, like you said, we don't want to lose those leases, but not to mention the fact that even if we wanted to try to go find another one.
So like, I asked Nick about buying the ones we got, he said the warranty's getting ready to be up on those.
Said not to do that.
He says, so I wouldn't, he goes, I wouldn't buy them. He goes, you need to give them back to us and we'll sell them. He goes, don't, don't keep them, so.
And then we could switch for different ones.
Yeah. So I know when Jeff Boss was on council, that was his big thing, don't get rid of that lease because you'll never get it back.
It served us well, we worked on that. I remember I was on council when we first started doing that and it made a lot of difference because we always had something broken.
Well, a good, like, the water department owns their skid steer. Well, actually, we don't own it yet, we're still paying on it. We bought it in 2017, we're still making payments on it. But if something breaks on it, we're 100% responsible for it. This lease, we're not.
Okay.
So, so if it breaks, they'll come fix it.
Well, and as much as they upgrade equipment anymore, it keeps us in more modern equipment too and stuff like that. Okay, do I hear a motion or questions? Any questions are good too, but not concerning the lease renewal?
So the 12,500 we come from the street department.
Okay.
And then the 14,000 we split between the street department and the water and sewer.
Okay.
Make a motion that we pay the lease.
Do I hear second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to renew our lease with Foley Equipment Trucks for the Track Skid Steer and Track Mini Escavator in the amount 14,000 dollars. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Dieter, did you have anything to say?
No, before me, I'm taking pictures.
Oh, okay, I was gonna say, if you have anything to say, go right ahead. Does anybody else have anything else? All right. We're ready for gathering body and we're gonna start with Brian.
I think I'm good, Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. Nick?
Okay, a couple things. In front of you guys, we'll see these two things. So we've been, I've been talking with Brady Hestrom, the BG Consultants, about the project we're in new next summer on 56. And we were talking about using granite chips instead of the lime chips and stuff like that. Well, he's been checking with the quarries in Missouri and then in Arkansas and there's issues with getting those chips. The other thing that him and I talked about was, last time we did, chip and seal lasts about three to five years and then you have to redo it. And the state only pays every five years on a project. So if you only get three, you still have to wait another two years for it. So what him and I talked about was phasing stuff, which is what this is. The proposed phasing is below and what we would do, and the map shows it. For, so this year, what we're proposing is that we do from Belfry, bottom of Belfry Hill, we do all the parking areas downtown, all, everything, drivelines and everything, parking areas and everything, to Third Street. And then 24, do from Third Street all the way to the eastern of town. And that takes care of all the parking areas, you all have, you have new asphalt and everything, you don't have to worry about it. And then we would do 56 Monroe to Belfry, and that would be from bottom of Belfry Hill to the road that goes to Diverge Care up there. Because that section after that is actually still in really good shape. And then we take a year off so we can replenish our C clip money that we used to offset the cost of it. So. And above there's obviously the times we've done mill and overlay and how long it's been since we've done some of those sections.
Rather frightening to see the year 2032 on there.
Right? Yeah. Well, so Brady and I were talking about 1995, and that's, they did from, all the way from the east to the west side of town. And he goes, if you did that now, he goes, you'd be over a million and a half dollars doing it. He goes, 95, he goes, I couldn't, he goes, it must've been cheap back in 1995 to do something like that. So, well, all it was.
Or we just let it go so long we had to.
Well, let's not do that. So, that's kind of what we're proposing. Jeff Barbo was involved in it and he was actually the guy that came up with the idea. We were originally, we were gonna stop at Fourth Street and he's like, well, if we take it back to Third and just do all the drivelines, parking areas, and everything, I said, that's probably a better idea. So.
When will we be able to get some idea about the amount of time it'll take to do each one of these projects?
As far as?
As far as like, if we start on?
So, this, this project, you guys are good with doing Belfry, Third Street. You don't have, you can just tell me your final, because you already voted to do the project. It would be let this month, we'd open in Jan, January sometime, in January, we'd open the bids. And then it would be, I told him it needed to be done by June before we're shutting days. And he said he didn't think that would be an issue, so.
You guys are confident that some of these roads can go 10 years before we get to them?
Well, we, uh, some of them are not in bad shape.
They're not? Okay, that was.
No, so, I went, like, me and Barbo looked and then Brady, he came early today, before he met with me and Barbo at 10, and he drove all of them and kind of recommended what he thought, based off of being an engineer, what he thought would.
The 2030 for the, the Old Creek Domain's really a pretty good road right now.
Right, and that's what he's saying. And he goes, and you can move these up, he goes, this is, this just gives you time to replenish your C clip money. Otherwise, you're dipping into infrastructure money and stuff like that. So, since they're state highways, state funding, you should be the ones paying for it.
So, 56 to the, or Belfry to Third, I'm sorry. What did he, what did they think? How long did they think they'd have everything torn up and?
I think the last time we did work.
A few days, basically?
Week, a week.
Yeah.
Week and a half, max. And I talked to him about intersection down here where we have that manhole that's raised up in the middle of the intersection, about doing something with that, grabs me nuts. So, they're gonna either lower the manhole or do the asphalt so it levels off.
Is he designed to slow down people in Montserratis?
I suggest a putting a roundabout there, so. Jokingly.
Catch Brian out there drifting around the, the roundabouts.
I like roundabouts.
But anyways, if you guys are good with that plan, we can, I can tell Brady know we can move forward with it. This kind of shows the public what we're doing, we're planning, moving forward. And it takes care of the east side, you know, east side, we'll get part of it done this year and then in 24, the rest of it will get done. Nobody, all mill and overlay, no chip and seal or anything like that, so.
It's really just under a 10-year plan, it seems like it's longer than that, but.
Yeah, yeah, but he said, he said, Brady said, most good asphalt jobs last 10 to 20 years, 10 to 15 years, somewhere around there. So it just depends on how much use it gets.
We might think about putting some lines on that.
All that's included, all that's included.
I know, but like, right now, there's just no, no way to know what side of the road you're on.
Yeah, the problem is, we can go, we can go do it and when they snowplow, it'll all be gone.
It is?
Yep, it'll knock right off.
I don't know how anyone else here feels, but I drive that road a lot of times, I'm, I'm like, right in the middle of the road, I don't even know what side of the, where the.
Yeah, and if you're from out of town, you definitely.
Definitely go around.
I mean, we can go paint them, it's just one.
I just think it's a safety thing, honestly.
Yeah, problem is, we can't do it in the wintertime when there's salt and everything on the road.
Yeah, I don't know, I just feel everybody driving once in the dark and you'll see what I'm talking about. I mean, your husband is a, your business is there, you know what I'm talking about.
I don't have a problem with doing it, I just think you're throwing money away because it's gonna get, as soon as you get snow.
What's it, what's it cost to paint them?
Oh, by the time we buy the paint, the guys out there, you're probably two, 300 bucks into it.
Maybe we just have a plan, in the spring, once the snow and ice is off, every spring, we just repaint them a couple times a year.
Yeah.
Well, because, you know, we always paint downtown every year for Waschunga, so I think the east side, I'm here to talk about the east side, we need some attention over there.
We paint the curves over on the east side as well, Denise, so, we do.
Okay. Now they do over by the parks and stuff.
I'm surprised the, the state, that's a state highway, right?
But, you know, yeah.
So it's a state highway, right?
Yes.
I'm just surprised the state doesn't have any like, say-so or city limits.
So like, I'll give you an example, like the issue we have in the 100 block downtown.
Yeah.
That $300,000, the state has no stipulations on if the project's done right or correctly, they don't care, it's 300, here's $300,000, it's the city's issue to deal with. So there's nothing that's saying, well, if the job's not done correctly, the state's gonna be involved and the state has no involvement, so.
Yeah, I see the dilemma, because if you put paint down, it's just gonna get scraped off.
Where is there liabilities down there if there's an accident because of not being there?
I don't know that you have any, there's side streets and stuff that don't have lines down the center of them, I mean.
Oh, but that's a major highway.
So, well.
I mean, we call it, we can't do certain things on that road because it's called a highway. And so, the state should have a little bit of.
I don't, Denise, the city, the city is responsible for the highways going through town.
Right.
So that's my question, if it's our responsibility and there's an accident there because there's not a line, somebody from out of town.
I don't necessarily know about the spot that we're talking about, but there's lots of unmarked highway out there, so, you know, I mean, generally.
You're supposed to be on the right side.
I mean.
Yeah. If you need a line to tell you.
But China, this is state.
Honestly, if it's only, if we're only in it, you know, $300 to $500, if we gotta paint it twice a year.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I just think right now, if you're getting in the wintertime, they already have put salt down on the road, so it's not gonna stick as well right now, so.
Temperatures.
And temperatures, the other thing.
Work out real well.
But I'm kind of thinking, and maybe I'm wrong here, but we have that money allotted, right, for the safe school?
Safe route school doesn't have anything to do with the highway.
Right. However, the safe route school involves the highway, does it not?
The crossings, yes.
Okay.
Then they'll paint your crossings.
But, if they have no say, I mean, I, I don't know, I haven't seen a design of what they plan to do to make it safer, so, I am really curious as to what is, how, how that money's gonna be spent on the, on the east side at the grade school.
It's gonna fix all the crossings, put in new sidewalk, put in new crossings, crossings for the highway, new beacons.
ADA stuff.
ADA stuff.
We do have the design, it's, we've seen it in council already, so they do.
Okay, I haven't seen it, I'd like to see it.
Yeah, I can send it to you, you can look at it.
Yeah, I would, because I'm very concerned and, um, living over there and on Eighth Street, since I moved to Council Grove, I've lived on Eighth Street, so I want to make sure, I really do want to make sure it is safe. And when the school put those, or whoever, the city, the highway, whoever put those rocks in there and those boulders in there, I don't think that that was a wise decision and.
The city used our equipment to put it in there, whether it was the school district's decision because it is their property, not the city.
And it was unwise and, um, it, I don't know who that all traveled through and what kind of.
Well, there's a whole background to it, Denise.
I understand, but there's also another side to it, I'm just saying.
I know, but.
There's some great things that can happen over there on that side of town, there are some, with our parking at the school, and, um, I just hope that's addressed in this plan and I.
The parking, we have nothing to do with parking at the school.
The city doesn't have, have really any.
We don't have any, we don't have jurisdiction over school.
I, I'm just gonna be curious to see how our, our million dollars is spent, paint and paint and.
Well, do you not think we have a plan for it?
Okay.
We have a plan for it, Denise, there's engineered drawings of it.
Right.
We're not just saying, hey, we, when we apply for this money, we have to supply them with engineered plans, drawings, and go through a whole engineering process to get the funds.
Forgive me, if I don't always, forgive me if I don't always trust engineers and all of their decisions, that's all I'm saying.
Well, I would hope you would trust the council and myself.
Because the rocks over there, because the rocks over there have changed, have, it was just a bad idea and I wish they would've consulted some people that lived over there and had other ideas and that's all I'm saying. I hope they will.
But I don't believe that was an engineered product, project, it was just a.
So what they were having was water issues with their buildings and their better, buildings were settling and it's cracking the foundations on them. So they jacked all the buildings up and what they were recommending to do was put in rock to slow the water down so it doesn't wash out those buildings.
Another great thing that could've happened is the concrete tunnels could've been put in there, we could've covered it with, um, concrete and had all of that be parking. I'm just saying, I'm gonna try to cause trouble because it's there already, I'm just hoping.
I'm probably diverting a little bit too far from the comment section into something that should probably be mentioned in the situation.
I think there's a sign, it's a school district.
It is, it is.
That, that might be a conversation, Denise, that needs to be taken up, actually with Aaron.
Yes.
I, I mean, you know, and.
Because I'm concerned, that's all. I'm just saying, I am sitting here on the council, I am, I have lived on that street and I'm just, I hope that the money, I can't wait to see the design.
Well, I think that, I will caution you to say that the people have done work, did do a good job, or didn't do what they were supposed to do. So, I mean, we work with the student district.
No, I think there were other opportunities that were better for the school and its function.
Right, and that's a school district thing, not a city thing.
Right.
We don't dictate to the school district.
So I'm sorry.
No, no, that is probably should be brought up with, with Aaron, if you have ideas or, you know, you and Chris have ideas or people over there, I would definitely ask Aaron for a little bit of time and talk to him about it.
Okay.
Because, you know, you might present something to him, he's never even considered.
Right.
Well, he had engineers look at and give recommendations on what to do over there, so.
So, you know, but it is.
I wonder what they would've said about the other ideas, I just wonder, and again, I don't have to take up any more time, I understand, but I just wanted to, I just can't wait to see the design, that's all.
The design is, is, we all have looked at, well, most of us, I think everybody's seen the design. And it's, yeah, it is, you need to look at it, it is a good design. And it's designed for what program meant it for, got it to be, yeah, so. But that's not, that doesn't include that area, you know, I mean, that property there, I guess I should say, so. It's mostly, it's sidewalks, roads, road crossings, like we talked about ADA, you know, the traffic flow, you know, for the kids and, and isn't a part of it on the trail, a little bit of it's on the trail?
No, the bench is a part of the trail.
Yeah.
Met with Kansas Wildlife and Parks, Jeff Bender.
So, how much is allotted for the east side?
Most of it.
Most of it's the east side.
Because, I mean, I'm sorry, but it is, there are some situations over there that I come across that I, I hope this takes care of, that's all I'm gonna say. Not to break a cost rule.
No, that's okay, and you need to, like I said, the best thing about that is to sit down, you know, write those concerns down, visit with Nick, Nick and I, the street department.
Right, I mean, if, if you wanted to see the plans, you just call me or text me or whatever and I'll send you the plan.
And we have a big drawing of them.
Yeah, we have all kinds of stuff on, I have, from when we first started till where we're at now, so.
Yeah, so we can, we can go through those, so. Okay, um, Nick, what else do you have?
Then I got a contract back of the scope of service for the plat, I'm gonna have Brian, I just got it this, late this afternoon before the meeting, so I'm gonna let Brian look at the contract before we talk about it. It looks like the cost to finish, everything that needs to be finished out there, which is plating the roads and then taking everything into consideration, not plating the commons areas, it looks like it's about $40,000, so.
So, it is a little bit more than I had thought it would be, but yet that's.
It was a lot less than I thought it would be.
It's a lot less, dude.
Well, you know, they said they had a lot of it kind of done and I thought, I was hoping that didn't hurt.
Well, at that time, we weren't considering putting water sewers, so they had to move some stuff around and change, they'd have to change some stuff for the plats and stuff, so. But once Brian looks at that, it'll.
I'm gonna be, I'm not gonna be very well liked today. It's been brought to my attention too that there are some issues that we've got to resolve when we record those with the new plotting and we add like.
Brian's already dealing with it, so, we already got taken care of.
Okay, good. You spoke to some of the people who do the title searches and, good.
Well, then, I don't even want to get into it. So, we got taken care of, Brian's got a solution for it, so we dealt with this last week and we dealt with it this week, so.
It was just, somebody brought it to my attention and I said, oh, you know, I want to ask, so.
Yep, so we got it in control.
Could you give us just a quick little rundown of the.
So, there's a bank, so somebody's trying to, it's H7, it's something we approved for them to build a big garage or whatever out there. And what happens is Steve Rosemar files with the deeds office that that now is considered a part of H7 or whatever. Well, the bank's not recognizing that because it doesn't say in the lease that that is included in it. Well, the deal is violated, the deeds office, the semantics is basically what it is.
They, they functionally want us to go in and update the plat every time we agree to one of those extensions, which is just patently unreasonable.
Well, it's costly.
It's not, not really rational that we do that. And what they're gonna do is trick themselves out of us being able to grant those extensions[1615.12] And what they're gonna do is trick themselves out of us being able to grant those extensions for people to build on. Whereas right now, we're, we're basically giving them a gift of extending that property out for them. And, you know, I.
You know, it hadn't been an issue.
What, what the council has done is enough for them to recognize that, that we've given them that property to build on.
The county that has to recognize it.
Well, no.
County, it's the bank.
It's the bank. So the county, so the county is taxing for.
Oh, you're, okay.
The county, so the county is, so they filed with the deeds office, copy of it goes downstairs to their frasers office. They get taxed on an additional property. So the county's still getting their money. What they're saying is, is that the bank that they're trying to borrow from doesn't like the way it's being done and wants it done a different way. This is the first time since we put the lease into place that this has been an issue. And that was 2012.
So the local bank or is it a?
It's not a local bank.
But, but really, I mean, they, they can look at what the council has done. There is their application that we've approved and there's a meet and bounds description crafted of what we extended it to. There is plenty of information there and the bank just doesn't like the way that we did it. What we did is not wrong and it, and the county's not not recognizing our stuff because it's all our land. We own every bit of it. However, we decide to categorize it or mark it up or chop it off, it's this person who's trying to get a loan to build on the gift of property that we extended them out beyond their, their plating.
Yeah.
Original.
So it's literally one situation that.
Yep, one situation that came up and now we're, you know, and they're recommending.
Well, hopefully it doesn't come up again.
I think, I think Brian heard.
But, but again, then the response.
I think the wording can take care of it, honestly.
The wording's already there, is my, my argument. You guys already did that. They have it written up. But I'm gonna do an addendum to their lease, a one-page addendum that includes the drawing of the plat in, in the language, but, you know, again, that's.
But that's gonna affect what we do in the future.
Right. I mean, they're, they're talking themselves out of.
Being able to give more land to, to build on, right?
Basically.
The lender.
Well, because the buyer wants the land.
Right, but the wise man once said, go find another bank.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
I mean, we don't, yeah, we don't typically change the way we do things because.
A bank doesn't.
Bank doesn't run person, yeah. We did that, we would change stuff a lot.
I'm sure we'll see more of this as time goes on and, um, there are more and more things that we're gonna come up against, but we'll, we'll meet those when we come to it. Anyway, um, any other situation?
I'm done.
Yep, okay. Real quick, you might, you and I talked just a moment, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to just throw this out there to you, but we, you, the two water lines that were broken on Main Street over Thanksgiving, what caused that? Just old water lines?
So the issue with it was, there were two old taps that were for water service. And when they killed the line, they didn't remove the tap and then put a, a clamp. Yeah, they didn't cap it off. So those, when you do that, they crack eventually at some point with traffic over and that's what happened. It cracked where the taps were, where they didn't remove the valve.
Okay, so somebody asked me that question and I said I would.
So it wasn't that the water made, blew a hole in it or anything, it was that it cracked because those have been there for so long and.
They're old.
Yeah, one of them was a dead end water line that went to nothing, another was just a tap. It was there.
Okay, so, but they got it all repaired.
Yeah.
They did it pretty quick.
Well, they called me at 5:00 on Thanksgiving and I said, well, I asked what they wanted to do and they didn't know if they had the parts to fix it. And I said, well, is it leaking bad? And they said, it's not horrible. And I was, next day it was Black Friday, then Second Saturday and all that stuff. And I said, if we can hold off, hold off. And they decided to wait till Monday.
That was a wise decision because it was busy and that would've been a mess.
And then they coordinated with Jeff because it was supposed to get cold out, but salt and sand down, so, um, people weren't slipping and sliding over there, so.
Let's forget the jobs, so. Okay, um, I think that's all. Um, I have, um, Jason.
I'm excited about this upcoming holiday season. Um, the trolley tours for lights and that. I'm excited to see how that all works out.
Okay. Anything else?
Nope. Sorry I was late.
You're okay. Not much you can do about that sometimes.
Any less than a customer.
That is good. Denise?
Oh, did you already go? Oh, I thought she went, sorry.
And there's my cue. Just giving you trouble. No, I, um, no, I'm excited to, to see the things happening over the holidays and people in town. I'm so excited the roads open. Um, and, you know, I don't wanna stir trouble. I just want it to be nice over there at our grade school.
We're working on it. It's, it's a slow process, but I've done it. Sharon?
Well, just on that, and the road open, I was talking to one merchant downtown today and she was saying that after that road opened up, she had people from Manhattan coming in and going into this first door and other places too, so, you know. I guess they're happy to see it from that end.
We are too. We are too, yeah. So, okay. Anything else that you could think of?
No, no, thank you.
I have nothing this evening.
Okay. Sean?
I have nothing either.
Okay. Okay, um, the only thing I have is I would like for each of you to do a little bit of thought on waste and your thoughts on promotion of the amphitheater. I've had a few citizens saying, why aren't we using that for more stuff? How you think we should proceed as far as marketing it and just your, any thoughts and ideas you have on it? You might get on the website. On the website, there's an application, right, to rent the amphitheater?
Yes.
So you might look at that app, application and then see if you think there are things that might need to be modified a little bit on that and, um, because we're coming into a new season and this is a time to start.
Mary, are you wanting us to talk to you about that or?
I would like for you to send an email or visit with Nick about it, uh, if you would, and then, and then.
Or you want them to email me their thoughts on what are, they think about our promotion and.
Yeah.
All they're saying, I mean, I thought, we talked, you thought, I thought you wanted to be broader than just the Riverwalk.
Well, total promotions, yeah, of our community because, um, as the economy gets a little, we've got inflation and we're gonna have the road closed again and we need to ramp it up again.
And then 24 through Sample Town, that's gonna be closed for a year and 24. So as soon as they get this opened up, they close that for a year, so.
So we're gonna be facing some slower times and I, you know, we've got these new businesses and stuff and we've got lots of stuff going on that we wanna make sure that we're accessible.
They were replacing the bridge.
Remaining vibrant. Widen the road by the shoulders and.
So 177 South, is that what you're talking about?
Yep.
All the way to 4 Mile, isn't it?
All the way to 4 Mile.
Yeah.
So, and I've been dealing with, um, Joe Palick and KDOT about rerouting because they would reroute 4 Mile to Dunlop Road through town and, you know, so we're gonna, I'm working with KDOT, since they're gonna use the city streets to do that, they're gonna give us money for maintenance. And so me and Joe Palick gotta figure that out, what they're willing to do.
Boy, and that's five or six miles of gravel, is it?
Mm-hmm. So the county will get money for maintenance like they did with this 177 project, so.
Well, it's, you know, it's just imperative right now because like I said, we're, you know, on a good, good road, but we need to, speaking of roads, but we need to, you know, continue on that. We don't want everything just to, because we're just pretty small.
We gotta keep the excitement happening.
Yeah, so please just send all your, any thoughts, information, um, things that you think that, um, the chamber or story media can help us with, what your, your thoughts on that and let's just continue to move forward. But if you would do that before, you know, before maybe January or first meeting in January, um, that would give everybody plenty of time to get their thoughts in order and any ideas they have and stuff.